Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's keep rolling. We'll bring up our next speaker. Please identify yourself for the record.
Greg Waller of ACS. We're the archaeological surveyor for the project. We conducted a Phase 1A assessment survey of the property in February. We issued a report, which I believe is in your possession. We brought two-page summaries with us. Can we hand those out?
Certainly.
I've got six.
Thank you. And you can send those down.
Thank you.
So, keep in mind that Phase 1A assessment survey is just background research and a walkover only. So, the idea is to do a preliminary study to see which portions of a project area may be sensitive for prehistoric and historic archaeological resources. On the second page, you'll find a map, like this. And the one areas outlined in red are what we determined to be sensitive possibly for prehistoric sites based on a number of environmental variables where prehistoric sites tend to be located. That includes proximity to major bodies of water, soil type, landform, slope. About eight variables in all we use for a statistical landscape sensitivity analysis. The nature of that model and its description and format are on our website, acsarcheology.com. So, that's available for public inspection and viewing. We also do an analysis for potential historic remains by researching land records, historic maps, and so forth. The Champion Cemetery is a historic cemetery site in the northwest corner of the project area. But historic maps and land records suggest there were no other major historic developments on the property. Looks like to me from site plans, lots will adequately avoid the proper portions of the cemetery, although we recommend that there be testing at the peripheral edges because of, you know, little-known practice of historically people who were kind of off-the-grid burying bodies outside of the proper boundaries of cemeteries. So, we wanted to make sure to be inclusive of that possibility. The rest of the area is delineated by red is, in our view, sensitive for possible prehistoric sites. So, the two concerns overlap. If you test the entire area's prehistoric sensitivity, you'll capture the area that's closest to the cemetery as well. Standard Phase 1B testing would be testing the entire sensitivity areas in 50-foot intervals and recording what you find and making a determination if further work is needed. So, this is a very preliminary study, and we're here to take questions.
My first comment was, were you aware that the twin mill and lake was previously protected estimation?
We are aware from soil maps and landform maps that portions are. So, not the entire property's been, right. And I believe that's mostly on the west side of the Four Mile River drainage, from what I could see from soil maps. In this sensitivity analysis, we tend to be over-inclusive so that if there's any doubt that an area might or may not have... So, in fact, our delineation for lot 24 and 25, I believe, on the west side is a little bit over-inclusive. There are probably areas within that that are too disturbed to potentially hold sites.
Thank you. I'd like to just back up a little bit because, well, thank you for being here and describing this for us.
Right.
Just for the benefit of the commission and the public, can you describe a little bit the distinction between prehistoric and historic and maybe provide some examples?
Sure. Prehistory by definition, anything before a written record. So, in some areas of the world, that's a little fuzzy, but here, literally starts with day one with European exploration and settlement. And the types of sites you might expect are different. So, for prehistoric sites, we would be talking about campsites and village settings, burials. All of these things are practiced by Euro-American descent folks as well and current Native American populations. But the way the archaeological remains are evident varies. So, for prehistoric remains, you might only have hearths and post-molds from the perimeters of structures, burials, things commonly known, arrowheads or what we would call projectile points, ceramic vessels, things like that. Whereas, for historic sites, we'd be looking for stone foundations, common domestic artifacts such as ceramic fragments and kaolin clay pipe stems and glass bottle fragments, things like that. So, same kind of methods, just different results and materials.
Are there any sites nearby in our town that people could reference?
So, I figure most of the sites I know are by number and from a state recording system and not by name necessarily. And in fact...
I just mean the county or...
Sure. I'll hold up a map that shows the distribution. So, this is a map of the East Lime area and a little bit broader. The distribution are red circles are the previously recorded prehistoric sites. You get an idea of the density of what's already known there. The two to the northwest of the project area delineated by black, I believe, are rock shelter sites. You got much more extensive village sites down by the coast, especially along the estuaries. In the Crescent Beach area of Niantic, very famous large burial grounds, well, famous in the archaeological world, which can be a little archaic and remote sometimes. But, so, there's definitely consistencies that we look for, and the distribution of sites as mapped here, it conforms to the environmental variables that we described of proximity to water, landform, soil type, and so forth.
Do commission members have any questions?
Just a while ago, I saw something on TV about trash burials and stuff like that. I'm assuming, have you run across any of those on this property?
Well, again, ours was only a pedestrian surface survey and a research analysis. So, we've not actually done any subsurface testing yet. That could be theoretically possible, certainly. And so, the next phase, if the proponent engages in that, would be to do subsurface testing. There's a map there. And to find out exactly that, if those kinds of features exist.
And if I'm reading your letter correctly, ACS, which is yourself, recommends a Phase 1B archaeological reconnaissance survey for all non-disturbed areas to be impacted by the project in modernized sensitivity areas with a minimal amount of testing along the hill ridge. Can you describe that a little clearer for us?
So, the, what you may have noticed from the sensitivity map is that, first of all, it doesn't cover the whole property. Because, and you may question, well, this place where they're loading up the current houses is a high density of homes on a hill ridge overlooking the water. Isn't that beautiful? And why on earth wouldn't Native American folks be camped on that, along that hill ridge? And that would be a great question, and my response would be that the soil conditions and landform aren't optimal or statistically relevant for that. But on a project this size, it behooves one to do some control testing so that you're not only testing what has been statistically relevant in the past in case new patterns might emerge because of sampling bias and things like that. And occasionally, things do break from statistics. So, as a control measure, we wouldn't load up that ridge, but I think it behooves somebody to do a little bit of testing there just to, just to kind of make sure and prove what we already think we know.
What might, what would happen if they found something?
We would make recommendations that they need to broaden the scope of work to accommodate the resource.
When you say the scope of work, you mean the scope of the archaeological survey?
Yes.
So, I understand you've completed a Phase 1A.
That's of the whole property, which is research and walking only.
Right on. And you're recommending a Phase 1B?
Just loaded up at 50-foot intervals throughout the red areas and a little bit of spot testing along the ridge, just to kind of show what we already think we know.
And then, after that Phase 1B is completed, there would be a branching point where there might be another level that would be?
Could very well be. Phase 2 intensive survey would be to take any sites identified in the Phase 1B as potentially significant. And there are strict criteria, not strict criteria, vague criteria adhered to by the National Register of Historic Places for incorporating sites into that and determining eligibility. And basically, what it comes down to is subjective opinion on whether or not a site is potentially significant in explaining past cultures. And at that point, what we always make alternative recommendations that the proponent is free to choose from, as far as we're concerned. That could include a project redesign to accommodate the resource, or to carry the sites through the natural sequence of archaeological excavations to mitigate them. A Phase 3 would be complete mitigation so that you can destroy the site and not lose valuable information. So, there's nothing in our world that stops the development from occurring. It's just a question of how much you have to go through.
Right. And Mr. Gaisel, that's what I was going to ask you, to just clarify from the point of view of our town hall and the regulations, this Phase 1B, which is being recommended, how long does it take and what would it do to our approvals process and...
Phase 1B, we could knock that off in a few weeks.
Okay.
And we would supply, you know, we generate a report like this over another few weeks. It's a real pain in the neck, but, you know, so what we do is originate an interim report, like a three- or four-page document summarizing findings, so that everybody can kind of move along while we, you know, set our graphics and do stuff for the fancy report.
On the site plan, there is the designation of an earthen dam. Can you, tell us about that?
So, well, we noticed two kind of damming features, one towards the northern end that looked like a beaver dam mostly. And then, there looked like a more man-made causeway to the south end. And these, both these areas are within areas that look like they're not going to be developed. So, we didn't make any special recommendations that they be conserved in any particular fashion.
Point those areas out.
Yeah, if you bring up the page 44 of that report and...
The specific language I'm curious about, it says "earth dam breached."
Yep. So, I wrote the report. So, this entire thing would be my responsibility.
So, what does that mean?
This looks like a perfect causeway, and then all of a sudden, whoop, there's a breach or maybe an intentional spillway of some sort. But it wasn't as if it's a current intact dam that dams up the entire drainage.
And do we know who maintains it or who did, who stopped maintaining it or any of the...
No, I'm not aware of that, although you can see a progression of the waterway on historic maps. So, on page...
Do we have the archaeological...
Does it have to point out the dam area is on the map?
Well, you can see where the wide part of the drainage gets very narrow.
The road?
No, excuse me, which was, okay, yeah. Yep, your cursor was almost on it. Goes south to the right. Yeah, you're in, you're in the middle of the lake. And where that fat part gets real skinny, that's, that appeared to be naturally dammed to us. And then, there looked like a causeway or something to that effect further to the south, somewhere in there.
There's a...
Right here is on the plan, there's a note that says "earthen dam breached."
There it is. Yeah, that's right. So, it's not a great concern for us because it didn't look a particular important construction, and it's outside the impact area. So, not something that we feel needs further addressing.
Commission members, are there any other, our discussion is with an expert, so especially general questions, terminology questions, those will all benefit, I think, our room here tonight. It's understood that you are recommending further investigation.
Correct.
And it does sound like there's a protocol for how that, what the results of that are, how those get...
We would disseminate that to the client, and it would be their call on further dissemination of those results, whether by legal responsibility or... But we try to make it clear at this point that we do recommend further analysis if those areas are to be impacted. So, we leave open the option of, say, eliminating all six lots, or building over, a golf course over them, or any number of things to accommodate the potential resources that could be there. But if they're to be impacted as site plans suggest, then there should definitely be further analysis in the form of reconnaissance survey.
Have we, has the town conducted a Phase 1B survey recently? Have we required that any landowner do that?
We, I know the town, we did our own survey. We built the bathhouse of the cooks.
Okay.
We had the state archaeologist down to do the investigation, where we estimated the hill. That was a subdivision that I recall.
There was a subdivision over on Gurley Road, right? Didn't they dig pits?
They did pits there.
Was that a Phase 1B?
That was a Phase 1A.
But you said a Phase 1A is not digging pits.
Shouldn't, there's some companies that'll do a very cursory amount of subsurface testing for a Phase 1A. We think it's...
He took an auger and...
That would test would be very crude and cursory and almost worthless, so...
My recollection is that it found nothing.
It was impossible.
And that's the danger, just doing a little auger is you could have a false negative. So, we would never do that.
So, the beginning here has been the Phase 1A, which is research and a walk.
Keep it clean.
Okay.
And then, the next round, you go punch holes, real ones, not big.
Excellent. Commission members, are there any questions on that? And to the applicant, is that understood? Is, are we to understand that there will be a Phase 1B?
If you require.
Okay. In terms of our batting order here, if there's no further questions for the archaeologist, I think we'll move on to traffic engineer with...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very quick points to make related to the archaeological study. If you look at the red area on the bottom there, and it goes all the way over to the cemetery on the north side. When Mr. Waller did his report, Lot 25 extended all the way to, or close to, that cemetery. Now, if you recall our last meeting, that lot, the lot line has shifted to get all the wetlands off of that lot, shifted to the south quite significantly. So, that property line now is, is a long distance away from that cemetery. So, there would be absolutely no activity adjacent to that, where that red line is just to the south of the cemetery there. If you can see the square at the bottom of the plan that you're looking at up there on the viewer, that if you look at your site plans that you have, you'll see Lot 25, lot line shifted far to the south, so there's no wetlands on it. So, there wouldn't be any disturbance there at all. And since that, that property line did shift to the south, that area, that section, that was part of Lot 25 before, is now open space, undisturbed open space. Now, the other points to mention regarding disturbed ground is a lot of Lot 25, if you walk back there, there's a clear dirt driveway that goes back there. You'll see a lot of disturbed ground. You'll see some various rubbish on the ground. Right in the corner, the bottom southwest corner of the plan there, that's Old Lime landfill. You can see all those contours building right up. And potentially, the earthen dam, I don't know the history of it, but there has been some earth, as Gary mentioned, alluded to before, there has been some Santa Gravel operation, earth removal here. And it could have been to cross, there could have been a pipe culvert there at one point, and they crossed back and forth because there is disturbed ground both on the west side in that red area and on the east side along the fringe. If you walk out into those areas, you can easily see where the grade has changed and it has been disturbed in those areas, especially the northwest corner of the easternmost red area, and then along the dirt driveway and at the base of the landfill on Lot 25. Mr. Waller had said Lot 24 and 25, but on that west side, it's only Lot 25. It's a larger lot. So, I just wanted to make those points of clarification.
Thank you. Good evening. Please say your name.
Good evening. My name's Jim Boobares. I'm a principal in Boobares Traffic Associates. We're located in Wallingford, Connecticut, and we're traffic engineering consultants. We prepared the report dated May 10, 2017, and I'll give you a quick synopsis of what we did and what we came up with. What we did back in March when we first started on this project is we installed an automatic traffic recorder device, that's with the road tubes, out on Green Valley Lake Road, west of the intersection with Spring Rock Road. And we measured for over a one-week period, we measured volumes and speeds on an hourly basis by direction.
And what week was that, please?
That was the third week in March. And then, we went back again and did more analysis the third week in May because there was a question about the sightline. Okay? So, what we found was, the road basically carries something like 250 to 275 vehicles per day. That's two-way. About 70% of that traffic is oriented to and from the west, which is the most direct way to I-95. And about 30% of the traffic is oriented to the north, which is the most direct way to Route 1.
Mr. Gaisel, do you mind pulling up that general map of the area? Sorry, continue.
What we found was, the speeds are about 35 miles an hour, right at the site drive location, which is about 300, 320 feet west of, on Spring Rock, Spring, Green Valley Lake Road, west of Spring Rock Road. It's about 300 to 320 feet. We found speeds eastbound, were about 35 miles per hour, and speeds westbound because they're coming from a turn as they're coming down Spring Rock Road and making a right turn. They're about 25 miles an hour. So, we determined what would be the recommended sightline distances that you would need for that site drive. And according to what Mr. Wren has, has measured and reevaluated as late again as today, we have the sightlines for that. We estimated the trips that would be generated by this development. It's 25 single-family homes, and it would generate something in the magnitude of 25 to 20, it's actually 27, 27 to 30 trips per hour as a maximum during the two peak hours in the morning and the two peak hours in the evening. And why I say there's two in the morning and two in the evening, it depends where people are working. Farther away they work, the earlier they leave in the day, the later they come home at night. And for those that don't live as far, they leave later, come home earlier. So, there's, when you see these numbers, as far as trip generation is, a lot of people think that that's the total that's going to go out in the morning and the total that's going to come back at night. There's really two of those hours in the morning and two of those hours at night. And what we do as traffic engineers, we look at the peak hour of the day, which, we look at the morning and we look at the night because the distributions are different. And we figure if we can prove that the level of service is good for those peak hours, then it's going to be good for the rest of the day because those, those hours of the day are going to carry less traffic. So, we did the typical, what we call, it's called a capacity analysis. I like to call it an operational analysis. We did that for this development based on what traffic is already there, what traffic will be added. And we found the levels of service will remain as A. And it's a lot like school. I'm sure others before me have made these presentations. We rate them like you do in school. They go from A to F. A is really good. F is not very good. And these are A now, level of service A, which means very little delay in coming out of the site drives or turning into the site drives. They're A now, and they will continue to be A with the addition of this development. So, the impact will be minimal. We also looked at the traffic crash experience just to see if there's anything going on that, you know, raises a red flag. We looked at all of the two streets, Green Valley Lake Road for its entire length and all of Spring Rock Road for its entire length. And what we do is, what is required by the state statute is all the police departments from all the towns in Connecticut have to provide the Department of Transportation with the accident data each year. And then, they take it upon themselves to put it into some kind of presentable format where you can, you know, find it and all that. Unfortunately, they're typically a bit behind in timeframe. The most recent, and we look at three years because we want to see if there's any kind of trend that is occurring. The most recent three years from the DOT are 2012 and 2014. The next group, which will be 2015, 16, and 17, obviously is not going to come out until next year after 2017 is over. There was only one accident on Green Valley Lake Road, only one accident on Spring Rock Road on each of those streets in that three-year period, and none of them were anywhere near this particular site. So, we don't, we don't feel that there's any, any reason why we would expect...
Do you have any details on those collisions?
They're in the, they're in here. You want, you want me to tell you what they are?
I'm just curious, was it a dog that got hit? Was it a...
I can tell you. I...
A deer?
One involved...
Parking on the wrong side of the street?
One involved somebody running off the road. And the other one was Spring Rock Road at Route 1. It was right angle. Somebody was coming out onto, onto Route 1 and got hit.
And that was the connection that you said was 30% of the traffic, 70%?
To Route 1, to and from Route 1 is 30%. To and from 95 is 70%, according to what we measured in the counts that were over a one, one-week period. So, that was a pretty extensive count. And we did it twice. We did it in the third week in March, and we did it again the third week in May.
Are there any further details? Was, does it say who got the ticket or if it was Route 1?
No, no, it's not. It does say something about a planning and zoning commission. So, anyway, that's my, that's my report unless you have any questions over me.
I'll just start with, thank you for your presentation. You've described the criteria that you describe, A down B, C, D. Are you able to offhand indicate some reference points around here? Does our town have B, C? I think most people here are familiar with merging on the 95, moving from 395, moving across 95 to 395. Can you give us a sense of where on the spectrum these safety concerns?
Well, I'll tell you, I made the mistake. I came from Wallingford today, and I made the mistake. I thought I was being smart because I saw that there was an accident on 95 just as you come up, the merge from 91. So, I figured I'd be smart and get on 80. And it must have taken me easily a half hour to go five miles. We call that an F, okay? Most people here, I assume this is the people from the neighborhood nearby and all that, coming out of your driveway is an A because you have no resistance. You might have to wait for the car, the car to go by, but, you know, as soon as that car is by, you're pretty much at your leisure, can come out as you please, and you're not going to have any problem. At a signalized intersection, if it's working right, you're somewhere with a C or a D because level of service is driven by the amount of delay. The more delay you encounter on average, the worse the level of service. That's just the way we do it. So, part of the delay at a, at a signalized intersection is you have to sit there and wait for the, for your turn to come up with the green light. Once you get the green light, you're on your way. But while you're sitting there on the red, you're encountering the delay when, until you get the green light. But then, once you get the green light, within reason, you pretty much can, can move along unobstructed. I would say the movement from either of these two streets onto, onto where it merges with 95 and merges onto, and merges with 1, where it comes out for 95 and it merges onto 1, I would say those are probably working, working at a level C, D. Okay? So, A is very good. That means, on average, as you're trying to come out of the site drive to get onto the main street, which in this case would be Green Valley Lake Road, you're less than a 10-second delay. All right? you're less than a ten-second delay. All right? In this case, I think I computed it out to be about three seconds on average, which is not.
And, and just to kind of drill down that a little tighter, if you have calculated a level A service with a present loading of the new subdivision, do you have a sense even roughly how many cars would trigger a B rating, for instance? Is the twenty-five lots we're looking at here, could fifty lots contribute cars to this neighborhood and still maintain A, or are we close to the B cutoff?
I would say if you had fifty to sixty homes instead, you would probably be bordering on B. Okay? And B is anything between ten and twenty seconds of delay.
And that's even at the Route One intersection?
No. No, I can't tell you what would be there because I haven't done an analysis. But what I'm saying is, from my own, there you probably wouldn't see a difference because adding another twenty-five cars to what's already there is nothing. Okay?
Okay.
All right? Given the, the broader picture. All right? Where you're going to see the most pronounced difference is here, right, right at the site because you've got very little traffic on the road already, and you're adding traffic to that, and yet it still remains an A. If you doubled the amount of traffic you were adding to that, you would go to a B. If you tripled it, you would go to a C. Quadrupled it, D, and so forth down the line. All right?
Thank you. Commission members, are there any follow-up questions regarding traffic?
So this is based, I just had a little clarification. You're saying that the twenty-five lots would generate thirty more cars, meaning, I mean, that would be?
Thirty, thirty trips. Some of them are coming in, some of them are going out. In the morning, about eighty, eighty to eighty-five percent of them are going out. You've got about ten or fifteen percent coming in. In the evening, you've got the reverse. Okay? You've got, it's, it's actually a little bit different. You've got about sixty percent of it coming in. You've got sixty to seventy percent coming in. You've got about thirty to forty percent of it going out. So a trip, as, as referred to in the report, is a one-way vehicular movement either to or from the site. So when we say it generates thirty trips in the peak hour, some of that is in, some of that is out. In the diagram we give you in the appendix, we show you how it's distributed.
Is that considered a conservative estimate or?
I would say it's about average. We have this document that's prepared by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. That's the professional society we tend to belong to. And they put out this document. It's called Trip Generation Manual. It's about this thick. And they update it every three years. And it's got just about every land use you can think of in there, and it's got collected data from all over the country. And then what they do is they put it together and they come up with a way to use the data, and that's typically with graphs and equations. For homes, they probably got the most out of any of the land uses that are in there, followed by probably condos and apartments. Then you've got retail and all the different types of retail, and you've got institutional uses like schools and so forth. So it's a, it's a pretty reliable source, and I've found over, over time that the data you get from that is, is pretty reliable.
Traffic is a concern.
I agree, Brenda. And just to go, one, on one side, we're talking about the quantities and the delays, and we're also talking about safety and people, these are families, there's bicycles, there's play in the road and things like that. Can you weigh in for us? I think you heard earlier, there's a perception that if we want to build the safest road for a neighborhood with kids, on one hand, we could choose a twenty-four because it's narrow and people will drive slower, or we could also argue that it would be a thirty-foot, very wide and very safe. What, please, where does the rubber meet the road?
I had a feeling you were going to ask me. Are there sidewalks to park? Well, I'm old-school, okay? I, I think twenty-four feet's too narrow. I think it should be thirty feet. Still only have parking on one side. You've got to consider that without sidewalks, someone's going to be walking in the street, so you don't want the street to be too narrow. Okay? And you want to post one side for no parking. I would not post the, the, the west, it's the west side that's going to be posted for no parking? I would post the east side for no parking. This way, when they come in, they've got someplace to park. And then when they leave, depending on how close they are to the traffic circle, they're going to traffic circle and, and turn around and leave. But if you post the west side, which is the inbound side, all right, that means everybody's got to turn around as they come in. All right? And I don't think you, you want to, you want to do that. But there's a, I do a lot of work in Florida. Okay? So I spend half my time in Florida, half my time here. Twenty-four foot road would work well in Florida because there's no snow. Okay? Not yet. Okay? No, no snow. You've got to add the snow factor in here, too, because as was mentioned, the road doesn't get plowed right away. There could be parking on the street. You, you want to, I, I think if you make it twenty-four feet wide, you're going, you're going to regret it. What you might not do right away is if you make it thirty feet wide is not post it yet and see if parking on the street is really a problem or concern. It may not be for a while, depending on how quickly the houses get built. As long as you put it in there and it's stipulated that at some point in time, it's going to be posted so you don't get an uproar from the neighborhood that, why are you posting my side of the street? All right? So in that regard, you may want to post it right away and just be done with it. And that way, everybody who comes in knows what's, what's there and learns how to live with it right away. But I, I, I would not, I'm sorry for, for, for saying this. I was hoping you weren't going to ask me, but I got to be true to myself, and you asked me, and I got to give you my honest opinion. I don't think a twenty-four foot wide road is advisable.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Could you answer one question from us? Wider road, more sightline, faster speeds? Can you discuss that?
Will they go faster? Yeah, they'll go faster. It depends how much, how much parking is on the road. All right? But I don't think you want to risk, you know, are they going to go slower? Well, I've got to tell you, I do speed surveys all the time, and I can't believe how fast people move on a twenty-four foot wide road. You've mentioned they're eighteen, you mentioned they're twenty and all that. I can't believe how fast people go. They're nuts. They're nuts. They really are. They have no idea. I mean, a kid can dart out, a ball can come down a driveway, a deer can cross the road. They can't even see what's going on because of all the vegetation, yet they're going really fast. So I don't think, if you took a thirty-foot wide street under these circumstances or a twenty-four foot wide street, and you measured the speed that people were going in either case, that you'll see much of a difference. You're not going to see anything statistically significant. You might see a little bit more with one or the other, but not that you can say, well, that's because the road's wide. Okay? I don't think that that's the answer you're going to come out of it with.
Even if that's attached to a dead end?
It depends how close to the dead end you are. If you're real close to the dead end, I mean, obviously you're going to be slowing down because you're at the end of the road. If you're at the beginning, okay, you come in and you live all the way at the end, yeah, I mean, you know, sometimes our neighbors are our worst, our worst enemies. Okay? They're, they're the biggest culprits. Years ago, in my former life, I was West Hartford's traffic engineer. All right? And we had a situation where there were these neighbors that were just constantly complaining about the speed of the traffic, constantly complaining. And we looked at it and looked at it. We did not agree that there was a speeding problem, but in their perception, they had a speeding problem. So we sent the police out, and they went out and they did a survey, and they, they started giving tickets, you know? Eighty percent of the people that they got there, all right, were the people who were complaining about the speeding. How do, how do you argue against that? You know what I'm saying? And it was a through street. It wasn't just, you know, a, a, a residential street where the people come in and they're the only ones that use the street. Anybody could use the street. And eighty percent of the tickets they got were the people who lived on that street. So, you know.
What is your opinion of the curvature of this road? It's got two curves. Is that sufficient to slow down traffic?
To be honest with you, I, let me have, let me take another look at this. I have it in here. Well, the last one will by the cul-de-sac, all right? I don't think the first one will have, the one that's to the north, I don't think that one will have an effect.
A specific question about your data. What was the, you tracked speeds coming down? What was the high?
What was the high?
Yeah, who's got the record?
Oh, what happened, Ricky?
You're tough. You really want to know?
I do.
So they were faster eastbound than they were westbound. Eastbound, the eighty-fifth percentile was thirty-five miles an hour. That's what we use as the measuring stick. Okay? That's what we pick, and that's what we base most of our designs on. The ninety-fifth percentile was thirty-nine miles an hour. Now, if you want to know how fast the fastest was... I can't tell you from the way this, wait, wait a minute. I can. Hold on. Forty-six?
Wow.
Thank you.
That was over a six-day period.
Yeah, that's in a thirty-five mile an hour zone.
I don't think that road is posted. I didn't see any speed limits.
Twenty-five?
It is posted twenty-five? Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Commission members, do we want to do any more questions for the traffic engineer?
When are we going to have tolls in Connecticut?
I think it's coming.
Tolls.
You know, down in Florida, just as, just a quick aside, my wife and I rented a car one time just because we were going on a longer trip. All right? So you pick up the car and you get on the turnpike, which is probably the only toll road down there. And they've got beautiful roads in Florida, although the southern part has got a lot of congestion. And we're driving along and all that, and you know that everything is being recorded from above. Okay? And it's based on your license plate. So as we go through this thing, and you don't slow down at all. As we go through this thing, this, this registry, I'm thinking to myself, how are they going to, how are they going to do this, whatever? Three day, three weeks after we got back, we had chucked the car in, we had paid our bill and all that stuff, we get a bill from the, from the rental company for the toll. You know? So you can do it and not stop anybody and collect a lot of money doing it.
Can outrun them.
I don't know what is keeping us from doing it.
Are there further questions? Great. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your answers. The time is nine-thirty, and seeing as we've provided the applicant time to complete their presentation and bring in their resources, at this point, I think we're going to turn over to the public side, and we'll continue our public hearing. Again, the objective tonight is to build a record of all your thoughts and concerns and all of the documents that the applicant has for a thorough deliberation, which will come to follow after we close the public hearing. Having said that, we're not going to close the public hearing tonight. So we will be back here at our next regularly scheduled meeting unless we take a sip, a special meeting in August. Good to know. So with respect to the comments tonight, there will be another opportunity for public comment, but tonight, if anyone would like to come up, state their name, your comments will be recorded by Brooke. Additionally, if you have specific questions, please ask them to the commission because the commission is going to play the middleman here. We'll ask the question to the applicant. One other, I, I just wanted to say hello to Selectman Salerno, who's here, who is an ex-officio member, which means he can ask questions and participate, but he does not vote. However, on some of the issues that are out of the scope of the planning commission, for instance, this cul-de-sac thing and getting all of our town departments on the same page, literally there, sounds like we'll have some coordination stuff that at the level of Selectman, Mark might be able to help us with, but that'd be down the line. So without further ado, any members of the public that would like to speak, please, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
I was on the edge of my seat. I was ready. It's late. I know you guys. I know it's late. My name is Carolyn Nee, N-E-E. I live in Eight Wind Circle. And I spoke last time. I have a, a question about the homeowners association and the regulations or anything that, that's around the, I guess, some of the rules or however that homeowners association is going to be run. I remember when I, I bought my house, I got the, I don't know, like a packet, and it was a Green Valley Development. I think Green Valley Lakes Development. And remember reading in there, if you had property on the, on the water, that it had a certain square footage requirement. And so I didn't know if the homeowners association could have something similar to that so that we don't have small little, you know, eight-hundred-square-foot homes, and then you have twenty-six, whatever. I don't even know what a big house is anymore. But I didn't, I, I asked the commission of how, how does the homeowners association work with this development? Who owns those rules?
Thank you. And I'll let counsel answer that one. So the question is, what will the relationship of the new homeowners association be to the existing neighborhood and the people who?
Initially, there, we don't intend to have any, any restrictions. However, when the association matures, that is at the time that majority of the lots are sold to third-party buyers. Then at that point in time, they could enact rules in terms of the operation of the association, restrictions on uses of open space and that type of thing. That would be up to the ultimate association, once it's fully formed, excuse me, and, and run by the homeowners.
So her specific question about someone who wants to buy the lot, is in love with the land and the view and the water, but wants to put the little cabin, that's presently, that's fine.
Number one, there's restrictions in town as to what your minimum square footage for a house is, and I think that's about eight. If my memory is correct, it's eight-hundred square feet.
Okay.
But it's not likely that someone's going to spend the type of money that it costs to buy a lot and develop a lot. It's not likely to put an eight-hundred-square-foot house on a lot of this nature, especially in this area.
Carolyn Nee, Eight Wind Circle. My last comment will be, I, I would urge the homeowners association at the beginning to have a minimum requirement, looking at the other homes within the neighborhood. That would, that would be my suggestion. If, if, if that was something the, the developer felt that he could add, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, just before you come up, can I, I would like to give the developer a chance to respond directly to that. Does that sound like anything feasible or?
Bob Fusari, applicant. I haven't thought about that. I don't think there's one out there now. As far as I know, there isn't one in the rest of the neighborhood. There's over a hundred and twenty homes built, and they all seem to be roughly the same size and nature of what's in there. And that's basically what I think is going to happen here. I've been building for a long time. I've never seen somebody come in, spend a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on a lot and put a postage stamp on it. Anything is possible, though.
Thank you.
Also, Joe, running up the record, a lot of times in zoning regulations, and I'm not sure about East Line, but a lot of times in zoning regulations, there's a minimum house size, first floor and second floor. It is in there? It is in zoning regulations?
Okay.
We have those regulations on the zip code.
Hi, for the record, Josh Chaps, sixteen Green Valley Lakes. The first thing I want to address is the issue with regard to the twenty-seven Green Valley Lakes property and the line and the buffer. I know at the last hearing.
Pardon me. Gary, do you mind just showing where twenty-seven is so that we can have a map to?
Yeah, could you use one of the applicant's drawings? It's probably exhibit K on all pages. It's probably Exhibit K on all pages. Yeah, could you zoom in a little bit more so?
And before we get into that, Gary, can we just take a note to clarify about the regulations about Caroline's concern about a floor for, a numerical floor for the size of house in the R40? Or? Not now, just, I meant just, can you not note it so we pick it up on the next one? I'm sorry, continue.
Okay, so the last time, I think the first meeting, there was argument or, you know, intervener's position or actually Mr. Lipowski's position was that there should be a 40-foot buffer pursuant to.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Yeah. There should be a 40-foot buffer pursuant to the CDD 23.5B1. And there was a letter proffered by counsel, which was the town attorney's opinion letter, which stated he didn't believe or interpret that regulation to include a 40-foot buffer on the side of 27 Green Valley, just on the rear. That was his interpretation. As a practical matter, the town attorney's interpretation is gospel. I'm sure there's someone else at Waller Palmer Smith that had a different opinion. I'm sure Fratton Harris was representing an intervener or somebody else, they might have a different opinion. But I think when you read that regulation again, the true intent and purpose of that regulation is to screen existing lots from the CDDs. I think it's an unworkable result just by virtue of Mr. Lipowski's property location. In fact, it's on a corner. But I would submit that a reasonable interpretation, which this commission can do, is that the regulation was designed to screen existing lots from the CDD. But even if you don't buy that, the subdivision regulations provide that you can require a 50-foot buffer, I think it's 6-10-14, so long as I think it wasn't showed on future subdivision maps, which this road, and I'm sure Mr. Lipowski or his council are going to show you, this road's never been identified as a future road anywhere in the history of these towns' records. So at the very least, this commission has a discretion to require this 50-foot buffer. Lastly, and I don't know, I'm sure Mr. Lipowski and his council are going to proffer some evidence at some point, but as currently drafted, it appears to me that the road will encroach on 27 Green Valley Lakes setback. Now, it's a corner lot, so that means the setbacks have to be 50 front, 50 feet in the front, 50 feet on the side, okay? It's my impression that the road is 40 feet from the Lipowski property. I can't imagine a situation where the planning and zoning commission would approve a plan that makes one of the existing properties non-conforming. I just can't. And it's certainly not the intent and purpose of, of the regulations. So, and I also learned tonight for the first time that.